Thirty-two, I'm gonna call our council committee meetings to order. We'll have a council meeting, special council meeting, a little bit later. And with that, I'm gonna turn to Gerald Cook, nominations committee chair.
Thank you, Mayor. We, the nominations committee is going to consider a report and with regard to lighting around the square downtown, and it's from the Main Street Advisory Board. And I think we have, Julie is here, and I've asked her if she would give a, a report to us from the Main Street Board regarding that lighting, and then we'll follow up there with staff if necessary. So, if you could, Julie?
Good evening, everybody. Uh-oh, lost my speaker. Okay. On March first, the Main Street Board met and voted to recommend to the council committee for consideration their purchase and replacement of the eight light poles. So, the ones that are, I don't know how you would explain, it's not right inside the courthouse, but the ones that are next to the parking, around, around the courthouse. You guys all should have a copy of the renderings, should have come in your packet. There's quotes for installation from City Electric, and then there's quotes for the light poles. And other than that, I don't have a lot of information. So, if you guys have questions, probably maybe Alan or Gerald can answer those for you.
Okay. Alan, you wanna kick into this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cook, several, I'd say a month or six weeks, maybe longer ago, we began, you and I began discussing the light situation in downtown. You showed me some lights from the city of Kilgore, Gilmer, Gilmer or Kilgore one, I don't remember which, that, that were very attractive. They were, they were of a vintage look, LED lights. Got a quote for those lights, or talked to several different companies, got a quote from, actually three of them. The, the, the problem with the lights we originally had is the luminaires of the light portion of it were, were up and down. They were vertical. In the intersections and along the street, we need a downcast light. So, I reached out to Spring City Electric Manufacturing in Pennsylvania, and they supplied me with the rendering that you have. The Downtown Beautification, I don't know what it's called, Committee looked at it, they met, we discussed all these, they felt that the downcast lights were most beneficial for downtown. The Main Street Board met and agreed. The least expensive quote that we received was from, from Spring City Electric. Their turnaround time, they've quoted ten to twelve weeks, but he told me it could be as long as six months. However, they manufacture every piece of their light with the exception of the LED. So, it's all made in America, it's all made in the state of Pennsylvania, I told him, too bad you weren't in Texas. But I did talk with a company down in Houston. Their quote for the eight lights was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, as was HEDCO, the, the lights that Kilgore had. Reached out to a friend of mine who's sort of in the business, and he recommended the Spring City. He said that Dallas uses Spring City, Collville maybe, or South Lake One uses them in their, in their soft, in their historic district. One thing I will point out about these, these poles, they do have two 110 electrical outlets. They, we can mount our speakers on them, they'll make a bracket that fits our specific speakers. And they come with permanently attached, and our reinforced permanently attached banner arms. The cost for all eight poles is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, that's eighty-seven hundred and forty-five dollars apiece. I reached out to Jay Mills, I don't remember if it's Jay or Jared, one of them said that all of their lights are done by, by City Electric, all their local lights are done by City Electric. Reached out to David Bragg, he has actually worked on the poles around the square for the last forty years, he knows them in and out, and sideways, and up and down. He gave me a quote of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars to replace all eight poles. It's a little, it's a little less than three thousand dollars apiece, it's twenty-nine and change, twenty-nine hundred and change. And, and for, for about ninety-five thousand dollars roughly, we can replace all eight poles, have the old ones hauled off, and make our downtown a little bit nicer.
The, can you talk about the, I mean, they have the patents on this product, Spring City does, and everything, and you said they're sole source?
They are sole source, and I think you have a copy of the sole source letter in your packet as well. They have five patents, four patents on their, not only their, their lights, but their processes for the lights. So, they are, that is proprietary, and they are sole source.
Do you feel like that this is the best deal that we possibly can get?
Yes, sir. The other two quotes that I had, one of them was a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and the other one was in excess of a hundred, I don't remember the exact number, I think it's one oh six, one oh nine, something like that.
Okay. For the committee, I know that the design committee and, and reporting as part of the Main Street looked at the lights and, and were counting them around the square and everything. We've had a lot of lights that burned out, by the way. That's why it's dark down there around the square.
Correct.
And I think it's gonna cost us some dollars to fix those, and I believe all of those lights are the city lights, is that not correct?
I believe that's correct. We've, we've already requested that, that the coverheads be replaced with LEDs.
The coverheads are these lights?
Are the overhanging lights, that's correct.
That sits on the corner?
That's correct.
And those, as a matter of fact, the ones here on Washington Street, there's only one of them that burns.
I think there's only one that burns around the entire square.
Around the square, yeah.
The, the reason I authorized the expenditure for those is it's five thousand dollars to replace them. This may be as much as six months away. We need to light up our downtown, and when these are completed, we can use them in the parks, we can use them with other streetlights in town if necessary, or if needed.
Alan, will, will we be able to utilize the light poles that we have out here in other areas? I mean, those will be taken down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they'll be stored at the, at the municipal service center.
Possibly use them in the parks or some other place in the community?
Yes, sir. Those are good steel poles, they're approximately forty years old, they're not really showing any wear and tear, they need to be painted, they need to be stripped and painted, but other than that, I think they're, they're serviceable for other parts of the community.
Okay.
I will say, I will say, and I forgot to say this, and I apologize, Mr. Bragg did say that if this is approved tonight by council, he wants to go look at the bolts that currently hold the, the lights down. He, he is concerned that due to the age, they may be rusted in, so, so there may be some additional cost in this that we won't know until we actually get into it.
Okay. From our committee members, Leanne, Justin, Alan, any questions?
Do they utilize the existing base, or is this included new base?
No, sir, they will, the, the Spring City will match the bolt pattern that, that currently exists. Mr. Bragg explained that the, the bolts are approximately twenty feet deep, and the pillars that they stand on are approximately six feet deep. He said that in order to put a twenty-five foot, ten inch pole in, you needed that much anchoring due to wind load, and so, so I reached out to the company to make sure that they would copy the bolt pattern, and they said they would.
So, it will bolt to the existing base that's there, that won't have to be changed?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the pillars, the concrete things, they will not have to be replaced, correct?
Okay.
What is the, do you have an idea of what the potential additional costs might be?
I do not. He, he said he wouldn't know until he opened them up. I, I asked him yesterday for this, so I could give you an idea of how much it would cost to, to have them installed. And even for our, our purchasing requirements, I had to have two more quotes to, in order to.
This is just the first quote you've got on?
First quote I got, yes, sir. And we'll, we'll reach out to two more electric company.
Okay.
But we're not looking at like another ten or fifteen thousand dollars, surely?
Oh, I would not think so. I don't know how it would be.
Well, right now, we're sitting at about ninety-three one on this.
It's actually ninety-three four sixty.
Okay.
Where are these gonna be located?
On the islands around the square.
Okay, there's been talk.
There's one on each corner, and then there's one in the middle of each one, so.
Where the angled parking is?
So, there's eight of them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, see, there's been talk about renovating that and doing away with that parking in the future.
Well, we're still gonna have to have lighting in those intersections. If we have to move them, then they'll be moved, it makes sense to, to move them across the street onto where the part, the, the walkway is now, the sidewalk is now. So, in the future, and nobody knows when we're gonna be able to do that. I mean, at the end of the day, we're, we're having to piecemeal downtown right now, but they will be able to be relocated if, if necessary in the future.
At an extreme expense to anchor it like those are anchored, correct?
Yes, sir. I think I'd leave the little cutouts right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Justin, did you have a question?
It didn't sound like we had an answer to my question, so, I don't know what the additional costs would be, so, I mean, is there a rush on this, or?
No.
Well, we're down to one light.
Now, this is a, a recommendation from the Main Street Advisory Board from, for us to, and this is another one of this, we keep calling them, I think it's been characterized as little steps, you know, banners, flags, now lights, to try to make the downtown start in addressing those things that are problem areas, just like some of the grass growing in certain places, and sidewalks that are, that are broken, and, and stuff like that that will need to be addressed in the future, and so you start working on them, and you do them a little at a time. This is, sounds like a lot, but looking at what the other costs were, and based on what Alan was just saying, I sat in on a meeting with, in this particular project with, with Alan, and, and when we had the encore here, thinking that maybe that would be a solution, it wasn't. As a matter of fact, I was really surprised at how unhelpful encore was overall in this, in this, and, and also, it, it falls back, and I guess that is why other communities and other cities, when they're talking about a beautification effort or downtown redevelopment efforts, they've bit the bullet and, and have done their own lots.
I will say that we've recently rehired Rob Turk, our former, former building official, and I was making some comments or something of these the other day, and was talking to him about them, and he said that Mineral Wells had replaced many of their lights with, with vintage type lights.
Okay. So.
What's the source of funding for this? Can it come from hot funds?
Yeah.
Where's Monica? Source of funding for this?
Well, it'll either come out of general fund reserve, or, you know, the fact that our sales tax has been up through March, we're up about half a million dollars above where I anticipated it would be.
It's promotion of tourism, isn't it?
No, no.
I think Leanne just said no, so.
Sorry, that was.
Well, I'm, I'm trying.
I mean, maybe parts, but, I mean, come on now.
Yeah.
I think it's out of public works, Alan.
I didn't, I was gonna say, public works sounds way more.
It's definitely not an enterprise fund.
I was about to say, both of, both of those come out of general fund.
I think public works has a whole lot closer tie to that than tourism does.
Uh-uh, it's on city property. It's close to this county property as well.
Who do we know in the county that can?
Okay. I'd like to bring it back, would have any other questions from the other council?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Since this may go into the special meeting, I'll just ask them now. The, the cost for moving the speakers and replacing those, do we have an estimate on that?
No, sir, it should be minimal. We can get you one.
Do you remember what the installation was on, just had them, just the installation?
Jason does.
Two, two. That was the installation cost? That was the total?
That was the total thing for the whole speaker.
They're all wireless, Rob, I mean, there's no, there's not a lot of wiring to them. Well, I guess there's some power.
There's electricity to them.
The City Electric quote says excludes any added wiring or light controls, do we know anything about any of that that's gonna be required?
Yes, sir. He was talking primarily about those four existing LED heads on the middle of the poles, those are controlled by a single pole light switch, and he said that if we wanted to replace those, it would cost, it would be additional cost to put those on and have the light switches. I think those would defeat the purpose of the sidewalk lights, at least for the time being, we can see if, if those would be needed afterwards, 'cause he, he, each time I talked to him over the last two days, he reinforced that those, those four lights, the four LED heads in the middle, were for lighting during events, and with the sidewalk lights, having eight lights instead of four should suffice to, to light that parking area at night.
And my, I guess last is just my concern, I know we had a report a couple of months ago about a lot of things that were noted downtown, kind of an inventory of things, has, a lot of that was easy stuff to address, but it's seen during the daytime when businesses are open, and have we made an attempt to address that, or have a plan to?
We have, and we do. Yes, sir. The, the weeds in the sidewalk, I really can't express to, to Ms. Cook and her committee how much I appreciate that, 'cause that's my pet peeve in the community. Those are being addressed. The, the beds across the street will be addressed when it's time for planting, as well as the planters inside, or, I'm sorry, on the square. I don't know that we know who owns that bench that's in front of Scott Allen's building. We'll make calls to find out who owns that bench and have them.
It's on the public sidewalk, right?
Correct.
Yes, it is.
We have, we've discussed having the, the benches face the, the street, and looking at other communities, specifically Granbury, as well as others, they do face the building, so I'd like to address that with the, the design committee to, to get further input from them. But yes, sir, we are very cognizant of the, the concerns in downtown, and we're trying to address them.
Concrete, lusted concrete, curbs, and those sorts of things?
The curbs, yes, we can address. The sidewalks are the responsibility of the building owner.
Has that been addressed to them?
I don't know. I'm getting ahead. It will be.
I, I guess I just, if we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, it's not budgeted.
I know where you're going.
To light up the downtown when nobody's open, I would like to make sure that we are focusing our efforts on beautification when the businesses are open.
Yes, sir.
I know that, that, the poles will beautify things even during the day, but there's a lot of, much more simple things and much less expensive things that we can do, I just don't wanna put the cart before the horse.
Yes, sir. Our Parks and Land Services Director is in the room, and she's taking note, as is our new Main Street Manager.
Alan, could you think, if we've got a ten weeks, or six months, or whatever it is, lead down on these things, and here we're going into the spring and summer time period, can we, will city staff be able to address some of these issues with regard to the parts across the street, with regard to some of the, the weeds and the grass and all that kinda stuff, so that by the time we get the new lights put up, we're gonna have a different look downtown?
Sir, if they don't, I will personally.
Well, and to follow up with what Ricky just brought up, we actually have a lot of activity downtown in the evenings. There's, there's several places that are open, restaurants, other bars, wine bars, the places over here, the dance places, there's several places that are open after dark, and so, anyway.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
Desperately needed.
Bring it back to the committee, and what would y'all, we'll hear a motion that we recommend this to the full council?
I make the motion that we, I'll probably have to butcher this, you're gonna have to, I make the motion that we send this on to full council for consideration.
Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second that we will recommend this to the, the full council for.
I'd like a little bit more additional discussion, though. Like to look at the visual of where we're headed. Maybe you guys have an idea in your mind about it, and I'm good with that, and, yeah, attack what you can in terms of what you can afford to do, but I, I think if, you know, if it makes more sense to pour piers and put these lights somewhere else, because we're eventually not gonna have those lights there, I'd rather do that now than I would spend a hundred grand and then come back five years later, and, oh, now we're gonna need to spend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, 'cause we're gonna move them to a different spot, so.
And I think Justin's got a good point, you know, if, if there is a plan, I'd like to see it, and if we only put half as many lights, but put them out on the outer perimeter for now, knowing that that's where they're all gonna be eventually, I'd rather do that in the very beginning, and with the extra anchoring, just put up half of them there and come back and put the other half of it sometime in the future.
This is supposed to go hand in hand, is it not, with Polikoff and his report that he's?
He's gonna drop that data next bit.
Yeah, of April fifteenth, is April seventeenth?
I thought he already dropped it, I hadn't seen it.
I, I did talk, I did talk with him yesterday, I did talk with him yesterday very briefly, he told me that the report is, is becoming very thick at this point. And I was supposed to call him back, but got busy and did not. Ended up without time yesterday. But he, he knows he's under the gun, 'cause Ashley told me she's on him, I've been on him, so, yes, sir, it's, it should be done, okay?
Any further discussion from the committee?
If I may make a suggestion.
Yeah.
If the council would like to move these poles, you're right, it would cost probably more than the poles cost to move them today. Why don't we consider doing that? We can, we can move the lights if, if that's what the, the council wants, and we can get quotes for the piers and the bolts and the whatever else. It's gonna call, we're gonna have to run electric to each one of them, there will have to be a meter base at some point downtown. Currently, the meter base is, is on the courthouse, and the county graciously pays. Thank you, Brent.
We appreciate it, Brent.
Go Brendan.
Mr. Huggett, you've got two months left to go. But, there, there will be significant electrical costs, but you'll also be able to place all eight of them on corners downtown, across the street from where they are now, we can disassemble those, maybe even leave the piers in place. And, so, I mean, that is an option, but I would suggest it would probably cost much more than the, the lights themselves.
I don't know why you wouldn't do these eight and add more to it, in my opinion, I just think, I spent half my life down here, I mean, I see it, I mean, thank God, crime's not bad in Steewell, Texas, if you wanna commit a crime, commit it downtown.
Yeah, that's true.
You're just listening to this.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it does, I mean, it's great, I encourage criminal activity, you're right. I encourage it. But no, I mean, but in all seriousness, no, I mean, this is just, it, it's just, I mean, I wish we could do twenty of these things, thirty of them, I don't care, I mean, that's just, it's just frustrating, it needs to get done. It's not very inviting at all downtown, this is, lighting is crucial, why it's so expensive.
We have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, I'd ask, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, then we will take this on to the city council and recommend action on that. I, I expect that we'll have further discussion, and if this goes along, we've got such a long waiting period here, it may very well be that we come back with, you know, if, if Alan, if you can, if the staff can put together the, the cost figures on, we go around side, but key thing is, is it, is it gonna fit into the Polikoff plan too here? But the key thing is, is it going to fit into the Polikov plan too here for what we're going to do? And I think we've got the time here to discuss that so we can make modifications.
Yes, sir. And also understand that even if, even if the 10 to 12 weeks or whatever the time is, that we get the pole, the lights, we don't have to put them up.
That's right.
We can, we can warehouse them and decide.
And this is going to be, this is going to be a firm price?
Yes, sir.
Here and we'll lock it in at the, at this amount.
Is installation cost is good for 15 days?
Installation is good for.
At all times, yeah.
Yeah, at least two.
At least, yeah.
Can't lock the installation in, but we might, we'll lock the cost of the poles in. Okay? All right. Just for the committee's standpoint, we will have a, you have, I think, probably have received a note that we've had a resignation of Mr. Hamilton, believe that Jeff has resigned because of his work schedule from the Main Street Board. And so we will be considering that at the next meeting, a replacement for him. So that's all we have, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Haskins.
Um, let's see. Get the right. Okay. Building and grounds vehicle, staff report. All right. So this is out of the Parks and Leisure Services. Staff recommends approval of the purchase of the vehicle from Brunner's for $28,276. In the budget, we approved $20,000 for the expenditure of a vehicle. In the same vein that we were just talking about escalation costs and bids being only good for so many days, we've identified a vehicle, but it is $8,276.75 over budget. This is a maintenance vehicle as part of the new maintenance crew.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
That's correct.
I believe staff looked into the possibility of used vehicles. As you might imagine, used vehicles cost nearly as much as new vehicles these days.
Mr. Haskins.
Yeah, it's true.
Mr. Haskins, for clarity's sake, this pickup is a fleet vehicle. It's fleet priced. The advantage of this used vehicle is that manufacturers do not give fleet prices on used vehicles. So that's how this, this becomes competitive, so competitive with used vehicles.
Sure.
Kelly, do you have that area fully staffed now? We're good to go in that area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they're ready to go?
Yeah. We have them a trailer, we just don't have any.
We need a truck.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve that, please.
All right. Second. Motion and a second.
I have one question.
Okay.
Just, I'm assuming this was all, I know it was all discussed because of what was budgeted for it, but I noticed this is a half ton, I guess, a single cab and that with a V6 in it. Is that going to last?
Yes, it should.
With what they're going to be hauling around with, you know?
They're going to be hauling two riding mowers and I believe push mowers as well, aren't they? And the trailer, it shouldn't have too much weight on it. Single cab, it's a two man crew, so they don't need a larger cab. And we're trying to spend locally.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. That'll go forward with positive recommendation to council. And that is my report. Mr. Russell?
We've been working on this one for a while, so hopefully we can get this one done. This is, Kelly's done some work. We met actually with Alan, or with Jason and Mr. Nick on some things that came out of our previous meeting regarding our alcohol policies in our park. And so Kelly took that back, took our recommendations and has rewritten that. So if you look, you'll see that new language reads alcoholic beverages are not allowed inside designated youth and adult sport fields, splash bill, rec hall or senior citizen center except when approved by the director of Parks and Leisure Services. So we'll be looking for an approval recommending the new proposed alcohol policy. And then while we were reviewing that, we got some feedback from some people about 97.46, which was a problem in our, is. We took some stuff that was in our cemetery stuff when you signed and got a plot. There's some rules that are associated with that. We were putting it into this ordinance package. We met and I talked to Jason about it as well and we really didn't think it was necessary. It was kind of redundant and we had some concern from community members out there about that. So we asked to remove that section from this ordinance. And there was a firearm issue that came up and I believe Jason has reviewed that. And so we're also recommending that we remove that section or amend that section as well. So we're really just making a few minor changes to it and we met with Mr. Nick and worked on the alcohol policy. And so those are the three things. You have anything else?
No.
So we'll be looking for a positive recommendation to move that forward to full council.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sure.
Do I have another aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I still don't feel like alcohol's appropriate in the parks and I understand that we worked on that and that's probably the best compromise that we can reach, but that's, that's the way it's going to be and the council will decide that, but that's my opinion.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate y'all's work on it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
End it?
That's it, that's all we got.
Mr. Thurman?
Review and discuss compensation study and step pay plan. We're not asking for any action tonight. I feel like I've said that several times.
Every committee.
But we always think we're going to be there. We don't get there. But an update, I met with Alan and Jason and Monica this week and we finally got some numbers on what we would be looking at if we proposed to council what kind of we had all intended to propose or wanted to propose. And we're going to go back to the drawing board, try to find some funding, ways to fund it, but, and different ways to look at it, but just so everybody knows kind of where that, where those numbers were, that was going to cost, would, it would cost if we move forward with that, about $154,000 for a mid-year budget adjustment. The cost of next year's budget would be an additional $308,000. And that does not include any changes to, that excludes any executive staff changes. So, so the cost to move to that, as we were looking at it, was going to be probably somewhere closer to $400,000, I'm guessing, next year. And so we are looking at some changes that we might be able to make to that to still accomplish something very positive for the city and for the employees without bankrupting taxpayers. Because the step plan, the way it's designed, we're going to continue to see that escalation every year. And so we could, it could become unsustainable. And so we want to make sure we don't put ourselves in that position. But there's certainly no one that, I think that disagrees that we still need some attention on our pay plan for the employees. So, did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Monica or Alan?
No, for you, you did all three.
But we are meeting again in two weeks to look at some other ideas, to see what, see if we can come up with something to bring back to you that will be, that will be something that's positive for everybody. That is it.
It is 6:10 and we're going to close the committee, council committee meetings and we'll, do we need to take a break before we go to city special council? We're going to go straight to 6:10 and we're going to enter into special city council meeting. We are called to order now and first item is to approve an expenditure for downtown lighting. Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you heard the committee discussion. The nominations committee voted to advance this, this particular item to council for your approval. Staff respectfully recommends the approval of expenditure for downtown lighting as presented.
A suggestion from the city staff, we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the expenditure for downtown lighting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second?
I'd like some discussion.
Discussion?
To me, I agree we need lighting down there, but I don't understand why we wouldn't wait to see Mr. Polikov's report that's a month away. We're in this problem because of a lack of planning and it feels like we're trying to do something. I understand the reason for doing it, but we don't have the whole puzzle in front of us. And yes, we could utilize these in some of the ways, but to me, it seems out of order on how we're doing it. So that's my, that's my thoughts on it. I agree it needs lighting, we need to do it, but we're a month away from a report we've been working on. I don't even know how long. I was going to say two, but I thought it might be three months.
Please, two years.
So I don't understand the reasoning of not waiting to see that and then having a good discussion and then going based off that. Maybe we want to order more. I don't, the price per pole is actually pretty good, but maybe we don't need that many. So that would be my, that's my hesitance.
I will say that I talked to Scott last time he was here. Ashley and I talked to him because we brought up the lighting issue and that we were, you know, we're having problems with the downtown poles. We obviously need to fix some things. I'm not big on spending money to fix things that we want to get rid of anyway. And so I showed him the lights that we wanted to get, they're real similar to this light. And he agrees that that's the direction we should move for lighting. So I think he's on board. I agree with you. It'd be nice to see the plan and understand a little bit more about what the future holds for downtown and that area, but the lights can be moved if we need to move them. Obviously, there's an expense with that, but even if we mounted them somewhere else right now, I think you're looking at probably another $40,000, $50,000 if you were to do those piers elsewhere. And that, then maybe more than that by the time you run wires to it and do electrical work. So, I mean.
I know that the numbers Jeremy got at one time to move it were astronomical.
Alan, what's the, I assume we purchase this, all monies due upon order or is there, how's the, I didn't see it in the bid, I must have missed it somewhere.
Net terms, 30 days. FOB factory.
So 30 days within order? Is that what we're saying?
I believe that's correct. I have it in an email. Let me see if I can find it, but for now, I'll say that it is the 30 days.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm not against, we need the lighting. We need to make a dynamic change in down there.
Right. That's why we hired Polikov.
That's right.
Okay, but the renderings that we had, that were used before for the bond and all that stuff?
That was Polikov's.
Okay, so these lights would go on, would be the same as those renderings?
They would not be anywhere close to the same spot.
No.
Except for on this side over here, they're still going to be on Graham Street, they're still going to be on Washington Street, on those corners and on that end down on the streets over by, I mean, it's not like we're going to have to move all eight. If we have to move some, we're not going to have to move all of them from the renderings from before. So I.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's anything we learned from using those renderings was we didn't have a plan and we were trying to plan without a plan.
Right.
And, and that obviously didn't work out well. I mean, I don't disagree, we need the lights. I, I mean, I guess we could buy the lights and we know we're going to have the plan in 30 days or 90, 80 days or whatever Scott gets it to us, but.
We act like we're going to go fund the plan, whatever his grand design is in 30, 60, 90 days and that's unrealistic.
Well, we're not going to do that, I know.
Yeah, it's going to be years until anything potentially becomes that. I mean, unfortunately, so, I mean, I don't disagree with your planning, the argument you're making, but still, I mean, we're talking here for about years now. And I don't care, we can order the lights, we can fix the ones we got down there, I don't, I don't care. It's not so much about buying the new lights, it's about just getting the light there. We can run extension cords across the dang gum thing, put spotlights where I can.
Did we do any discussion with the county at all?
We, not that I know of. We will be.
I think, I think, I've already had, I think that could be something that could be approached now, so.
So would you suggest we be to table this until we have a conversation with the county?
I'm not telling you. I don't, I'm just, I just think that that's a conversation that could absolutely be had and I have no idea what they would do, but.
Well, I'll tell you this much, I would much rather, I mean, I want it done today, but I'd much rather table it so in, into the next scheduled meeting versus, or actually probably postpone it for the next scheduled meeting, just that way is to see that it comes back up on the agenda so it doesn't get buried for six months. So, I mean, I don't mind making a motion to postpone it to the next regular scheduled council meeting to ensure that it comes back on the agenda, so.
Can we send it to Polikov to get, make sure it fits the aesthetic of what we're doing? Get him to sign off on it, that it goes with our plan that we're moving with?
The next scheduled meeting is?
April 5th.
April 5th and we won't have Polikov's stuff by 5th?
No, but I can send this to Polikov and make sure it does fit with his plans for downtown and to make sure that the bolts are not rusted on. I would appreciate having a little extra time to prepare this. I can get some, some idea of what it would cost to move them. I can find out if it can be, if, if the way it is now would be used.
I really don't see a problem with that either. And I don't think the Main Street people see that as a problem, but, you know, as far as, we're speaking here in the council right now and having a little extra time, say if it is till April the 5th or April the 15th, you know, if, I don't know how good his bid, the bid is for it, how long a period of time it is, but since it is a sole source type thing, I.
It says pricing will be held six months from the original.
Okay, then we're okay there. We're locked, we're pretty much locked in on the thing, so I really don't have a problem about delaying this for a month, you know, until we firm some of these things up, Alan. I mean, that's personally, that's how I feel. And I'll be glad to withdraw my.
Do we have a motion to table then?
Well, I said we postponed it next regular scheduled council meeting.
He's going to see if he withdraws.
No, table.
Do we need to, do we need to withdraw the motion or?
No.
Somebody made a motion.
Yes.
Yeah, a motion was made in second.
Well, we made a motion, I have a second, and then someone wants to table it. Do we vote on, have to, do we have?
All right, you're talking about the original motion. Now somebody wants to table that, that motion. Yeah. Did a second?
Need a second to table it?
I'm seconding it.
Now vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll table it until?
April 5th.
April 5th.
April 5th. Okay.
Next item is consider approval of expenditure of a purchased vehicle for the Parks and Leisure Department. Where's you go?
Yes, so we are looking at building, excuse me, purchasing a trespass bar buildings and grounds crew this year to be able to maintain the grounds of the community in the park system and looking at a budget amendment of $8,726.75. So looking for a motion, council to, to purchase that vehicle?
Mayor, so move?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, now in compliance with the provision of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, Subchapter D, in accordance with Section 551.074, personal matters delivered in appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment due to displan or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit. We're going to go into executive session. Thank you all.
7:11 we'll call you back into the council meeting and there was no items in council meeting meeting or addressing after in public setting so therefore it is 7:11 we stand adjourned.